It is 7:05. I will call to order this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We do have a quorum present. On behalf of the board, I want to extend a warm welcome to all of you who've come out this evening. As I remind folks every month, we really sincerely appreciate your support of the Waco Public Schools and your interest in what's going on in Waco ISD. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device with you, if you would put it on silent or turn it off at this time, we'd greatly appreciate it. And I would remind you, as I always do, that the board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, as well as make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals, as management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. Once again, thank you for coming out. We also want to welcome anybody who's watching at home on Channel 17. And at this time, we'll move on to Item 4 and ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of prayer, contemplation, reflection, or Thank you. Move on to Item 5, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're pleased to have two outstanding students from Dean Highland Elementary to lead our pledge of allegiance tonight. Please welcome fifth graders Jolicia Brooks and Jose Bretado.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Board members, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's We begin tonight by thanking our pledge of allegiance leaders who come to us from Dean Highland Elementary. Jolicia Brooks is a fifth grader in Ms. Reyna's class where her favorite subject is math. Besides being an excellent student, Jolicia enjoys playing basketball and looks forward to being a lady lion someday. Someday, Jolicia would also like to become a dentist or a veterinarian. Thank you, Jolicia. Jose Bretado is a fifth grader who is also in Ms. Reyna's class at Dean Highland. His favorite subject is also math. And when Jose isn't working on maintaining his straight A average, he enjoys playing soccer and other running games. And someday, Jose wants to become a paleontologist or an artist. Thank you again, Jose and Jolicia, for serving as our pledge of allegiance leaders tonight, and enjoy your new books provided by Barnes and Noble Booksellers, a proud adopted school partner of Waco ISD. The Office of Advanced Academics hosted its annual Waco ISD Middle School UIL Academic Meet this past Saturday at Tennyson Middle School. A total of 425 students competed in 35 events. We are proud to report that participation doubled from last year and will continue to grow. Medals or ribbons were awarded to the top six finishers in each category, and students also earned points that went toward determining a school champion. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce and honor the top three schools. Finishing in third place, Lake Air Montessori Magnet School, UIL Coordinator Darren Brock, Principal Stephanie Tank Finishing in second place, the turnaround school of the year, Indian Spring Middle UIL Coordinator Shamis Sora, Principal Dr. John Jenkins. Come on down. And Dr. Jenkins, if I remember correctly, when we did our awards this fall, the teacher who won more incentive pay than anybody was Ms...I don't know what I thought. And finishing in first place, Tennyson Middle School, UIL Coordinator Jennifer Tucker, The Waco ISD Middle School UIL meet is made possible by a $10,000 grant from the Waco ISD Education Foundation. Partners of the Month for January, Waco ISD is fortunate to have more than 200 adopted school partners assigned to schools throughout the district. These businesses, churches, organizations, and individuals are helping students excel academically and grow emotionally. It is now my pleasure to recognize our Partners of the Month for January. Baylor Law School, HEB Plus, and Bells Hill Elementary, Partner of the Month Activity, Christmas Collaboration. Baylor Law School raised more than $7,000 to purchase Christmas gifts for every child at Bells Hill Elementary. That's over 800 gifts. HEB Plus allowed Baylor Law School to purchase Christmas gifts at cost, giving the law school a lot more bang for its bucks. HEB also provided an area to store the gifts. The storage area also served as a place to wrap the gifts. And of course, a wrapping session would not have been complete without delicious Christmas cookies provided by HEB. And that's not all. The money that remained after all the gifts were purchased and delivered, $2,500, was donated to the McLennan County Pack of Hope to assist Bells Hill children. The collaboration between Baylor Law School and HEB Plus made for an extra special Christmas at Bells Hill. Drug Emporium and Crestview Elementary, Partner of the Month Activity, Tea Time. Drug Emporium, a new partner at Crestview, has started its involvement by donating items for different school events. Most recently, the store donated paper products, punch, and goodie bags for Crestview's Winter Tea Time. Tea Time is an event that recognizes students who have exhibited good character traits at school. Enhanced by Drug Emporium, Tea Time gives students an opportunity to dress up and enjoy snacks with friends and family. Most importantly, the event has proven to be a great way to honor students for their positive behavior. Master Gardeners of McLennan County and Cedar Ridge Elementary, Partner of the Month Activity, Growing Partnerships. Master Gardeners of McLennan County came to Cedar Ridge on a regular basis to work with students in the school's garden. The most recent activity was planting carrots with second graders. And for the master gardeners, it's not just a matter of putting seeds in the soil. They take time to teach students about how different crops grow in different temperatures and the importance of rain. Thanks to the master gardeners of McLennan
All right, we'll move on to Item 7, which is Audience for Guests. Did anyone sign up this evening? No one has signed up to speak. So we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. I've been asked to pool, or will pool, Items C, I, and J. Is there anything else anyone needs pulled? Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Items C, I, and J. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Sykes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries will now take up Item 8C, which is the construction
Cheryl, I know I asked earlier in the day, trying to figure out on some of these delivery methods, it looks like there are a couple, Waco High and Carver specifically, that are not competitive sealed proposals. And I thought maybe it was the dollar amount, but there's some that are even smaller that are competitive sealed proposals. So I was trying to figure out what the...if we figured out yet why those were different.
And I did talk to Kevin. Sherry called him earlier, and then he and I talked. And it was basically what I told you. A couple, they could do those two projects rather simply. They were low dollar, and they are a little more critical as far as timelines. The rest of them are going to be packaged for the summer, but they do want to try to get those two projects done earlier. And it's not done through a JOC because we have so little asphalt work typically that we haven't done a JOC. But we do, on the maintenance bid that we award for services periodically, we do have an asphalt person on that bid that we're going to use.
Got it. Thank you for getting that clarification. And so all the others then will be included in one large bid proposal?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions on Item 8C?
I had one actually.
Yeah. Ms. Teckel.
I was curious on the competitive seal proposal projects. Well, I'll just ask the question generally. What engineering service are we using? And what architectural firm are we using to the extent that we need architectural services for any of the projects?
For engineering services, we had a bid that was awarded in December that outlined the various types of engineers that we would use. So depending on what the professional service required, we would use the vendor that was awarded in December for that. We have not, at this point, awarded a new architect. We have been appointing architects as needed for individual projects. The roofing project you see for Tennyson tonight will be the last project that we have under the PBK. And then on the two Guam projects, we've used the Wallace Group, but we do not have an architect at this point appointed for any other projects.
Okay. And so then that made me wonder what the status of the RFQ that we issued for architectural services. It's been a while, so I didn't...
That was over a year ago, and so that was just not awarded?
Okay. So is our...are we going to reissue an RFQ for architectural services?
I'm trying to remember, because at the time, I knew when we had the RFQ, we had it out, but there was some concern or something at the last minute. We decided it would be better to start all over. And we already had PBK with Tennyson, and we had the Wallace Group with Guam, so we just haven't really done anything. On the one hand, if we are looking at any kind of bond issue, I don't know if there would be...if the board would be interested in, if we do a bond issue, a large or seemingly large bond issue, would it be one architect? And for the individual projects that Ms. Davis and the Maintenance Department has every now and then, would be one, a different one, or would we want the same one? And that's just probably a conversation that we need to have.
Okay. I would...I'd like to encourage us to consider a pool so that when the administration could go to the architectural firm that they felt like had the best experience or expertise to do the particular project in mind.
So that's about an RFQ worded that way.
An RFQ for...to establish a pool.
Yeah.
I...we...I've done that in some of my previous districts. We've actually had more of a pool based on the size of projects, the scope of work, that we have chosen different firms.
How's that...when you talk about a pool, I mean, is it specific as to on this size, we would use this architect? Or is it more like job order contracts? We just have these folks available, and then you subjectively would be able to pick out of that?
Typically, you're not that specific. You basically just pick a pool of who you consider to be qualified architects.
And they're out there on call.
And then usually, we would come back to the board with a recommendation for a specific project in that case.
And that's also a good opportunity if the board is...for boards who are considering larger projects, you kind of get to try out some of the architects you might be interested in.
Well, and I guess that's an important difference in the job order contract. And so as you pick one out of the pool, that would still come to the board then for approval?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
They would have been kind of pre-approved.
All right. Any other questions on Item 8C?
Can we go back to the pavement for a second? I'm just curious about the pause.
Microphone. Thank you. And I understand that the time constraints don't allow us to go through a competitive seal proposal, and we're going to go...how do we pick that vendor? Who's going to do that? I assume we've got...we've got one or two approved vendors, but do we get estimates from them and do sort of an informal bidding process?
For...on our job order contracts, we do have a more formal process. If it's under $5,000, we use...when we award job order contracts, we award a primary, and then depending on how many we get to respond, a secondary, and even a tertiary if we have that many respond. So the primary awardee would get anything $5,000 and under. And then we have some criteria that we would go out for quotes up to a certain amount, and then over...is it $150,000? $125,000?
Over $75,000.
Oh, over $75,000. We would do formal bids.
Okay. Well, these two are right at $75,000, together anyway, Carver and what, Waco High Parking Lots? We're just going to pick one out of the hat, or?
Well, we have a bid where we've got a local...
It's based on a square foot?
Yes.
Okay. So they've already committed in terms of price to...
And we would probably still get a quote on these, though. We'll probably go out and get them, because these are not JOCs.
Right.
So you want to talk to how that's going to work, Sherry? Have they quoted in their bid? Did they...I think this is just one of our...this is one of our open awards that we do for services, for all those kinds of services that we don't typically get JOCs for. So they will have to go out and actually get quotes on these, I believe.
That's correct. This is just on our normal general maintenance parts and supplies bid, which also covers services not otherwise covered under a job order contract. So we do not have a job order contract, as Ms. Davis said, for asphalt, because normally we don't do that much a year.
Right.
And so we took...luckily, we had an asphalt vendor on our general maintenance parts and supplies bid, and we are getting quotes from them for this project.
Them and them alone?
I'm sorry?
But only one vendor? We're only getting...
Yes.
Pricing from one vendor?
Just only one vendor responded that does asphalt, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. President, could you just clarify which one you're talking about?
I'm sorry, the Waco High.
Waco High and Carver.
Thirty-five...you're talking about the $35,000 and the $40,000?
Forty thousand.
Right.
The two that aren't listed as competitive seal proposal.
It just seems to me like, and I don't know, there may be something in our rules of engagement that doesn't last do this, but it seemed like calling a couple of local pavement contractors to get pricing on those two projects would be prudent. But I...if we've only got one approved vendor, then I...am I hearing that our hands are tied on that, or it's just time doesn't allow it? Are we going to get it done quicker than that?
Well, because we had one approved vendor, we were able to go forward with this method. Otherwise, we would have to either go out on bid or use a purchasing cooperative that has other asphalt vendors approved, or use our job order contractor for, say, general construction. It's kind of a stretch, but it would fit under that job order contract as well. But the Maintenance Department has faith in this vendor. He's already talked with this vendor, has submitted us good pricing, and they're comfortable moving forward with this recommendation. They did their homework beforehand before we brought the item forward with pricing.
But if the board's not as comfortable as we are, that this isn't like a roof that's leaking. And we could...if you're more comfortable with more bids or a different way, we'd be happy to do that.
Sherry, I know this isn't your department. You may not be able to answer. But do you know why these two are identified as being in more immediate need?
We've got...
Oh, they're over here.
We've got our guys.
They're there.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, we're asking why we're looking for one vendor. That's the approved vendor. We can put it out for bid, but those are two campuses in particular that we have a lot of problems with, that can be addressed pretty easily. I mean, it's kind of simple fixes. It doesn't require professional services. We'll get better pricing earlier in the year than we would if we waited until the summertime, because those are smaller scale projects, smaller vendors like that have their...that's when they do the majority of their work. This vendor has done work for us before in repairing parking lots and things like that. So it's our one available vendor that we can discuss scope of work and pricing, all those things with.
The reason behind my questioning, Kevin, is just to...I just want to make sure we're getting...
Sure.
Good product for reasonable pricing, you know?
Believe me.
And I...we're...have faith in your ability to defend our interest in this process and...
We looked at fair market value. We went through there, did our own assessment before we ever brought these guys in to talk to us, kind of established what we thought the budget price was going to be based on, you know, fair market value that's published. There's a bunch of different companies, and, you know, they publish books and things like that that have average pricing. And so we applied that pricing. We requested that scope of work and them to give us a quote back on that price, and it was in line with what we saw.
We're about to have a bunch of other jobs to compare it to as well, so we'll know.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions on 8C?
I have one more before that.
All right, Ms. Teckel. Go ahead.
Are we going to post individually each one of these jobs?
No. Our thinking behind that is to get professional services to kind of bind all that together into one package. Makes it a little bit more enticing for a contractor to come in, give us good pricing during a very busy time of the year for, you know, those particular vendors and that scope of work.
So we'll have one published request for competitive seal proposals for all the asphalt repair and site improvements, with the exception of Carver Middle and Waco High that you're going to pull out.
And the athletics, which I think is actually...it's not in that grouping. It's in a different grouping by itself. We have some issues at the sports complex that we need to get addressed. That's one other one that's going to be separate from that larger bid.
Okay. And then is that...is the same go for the communication system upgrades? You're going to group all those together in one RCSB as well?
That's our intent.
And so you'll be back to the board for approval of the bid award for each of those individual projects?
It'll be one bid with multiple line items, so you'll have the individual pricing for each individual project.
Right.
It'll be bundled under one bid, so we get the volume discount.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Ma'am.
Sykes. Sure.
This is not regarding Item C. I'd like to ask a question on Item G, the Tennyson roof. Can we come back to that? I just have a question.
Somebody pulled it from the consent agenda.
Well, I...it wasn't that good. It wasn't anything worth pulling it from. But if you don't want to do it now, that's fine.
Let's vote on 8C, and once we're through with 8C, we will allow you to ask your question on Item G while the guys are there. Are there any other questions on C? All right. Then I'll entertain a motion on Item 8C, which is the construction delivery methods. Yeah. We have a motion on the delivery methods?
Ms. Gonzalez, do we have a...oh, I thought...
We don't have a motion.
We have a motion. Okay. Now I move that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Teckel. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Alan, go ahead and ask a question while they're up there on the roofing.
I apologize for...as we move to the next items, regarding the Tennyson roof, we've done a lot of renovations at that campus. What's the extent of this roof replacement, repair?
Pretty extensive. I mean, we're probably 80%.
Really?
Yeah. We have a lot of areas that need to be addressed, not just the top covering layer. There's some substrate issues, some decking issues from long-term leaks and things like that that we really just need to address.
And I don't know what the age of the roof is or anything like that, but were these somewhat identified back when some of the renovations were taking place, or?
Yeah. When we looked at these, we looked at a lot of requests that had taken place before. We went up on the roof, verified that that was still a problem, made our own list of the problems that we saw at that point, and kind of packaged everything together so we can try to get as much of it taken care of as we could.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Sykes. We will move on now to Item 8I, which is the content area stipends for next school year.
Ms. Botelho.
I don't remember who. Go ahead. Did you have questions on that, Carrie, or were you on the salary?
Just a moment, Ms. Botelho. I'll get you a question.
Let me start, and then we'll see if others have questions. Elaine?
Sure, absolutely.
In looking at that, I understand the need for the increase in science and math at the high school and middle school level. When I got to the last two on the reading teacher, that's the first time I remember seeing a requirement for a master's degree to get the stipend. And I know we've had discussions off and on about paying stipends for master's degrees. But to the extent there's a...I guess we've identified a critical need for a reading teacher at elementary or at the secondary level. What was the thought process in adding...requiring a master's degree specifically in reading?
Administration has been talking about a reading plan for the next school year. We realize that we need more support and training for our teachers, and whether we are able to have someone in-house or find someone externally that would have the expertise to give the training and support for our teachers, to equip them with the skills to help our students achieve higher results in reading.
And I understand the need. I mean, and I agree with the critical need in reading. I guess specifically, what was the thought on the additional...you're right, maybe inside, maybe outside, but why the additional requirement of the master's degree? Because it seems like we're getting on a slippery slope there, because I think, you know, the minute you pass that, we get calls from teachers all over the district who also have master's degrees in their content area, or teachers who have master's degree in their non-content areas who are saying, wait a second, why is a reading teacher getting an additional $2,000, whereas my master's is in science or...
Well, math and science are taken care of.
Well, but we're not requiring a master's degree in math or science.
Right.
We're not paying for the master's degree specifically. So anyway, I mean, I guess, again, the thought is just...I see us moving down a slope where we...in the past, we weren't going to pay for that. And it looks like if we start here, is this the first step towards wanting us to pay for all master's degrees, or why was this specifically picked out this way?
Again, we are hoping to...and as far as the number of reading teachers with master degrees, that has not been decided by administration at this point in time. I know Dr. Kane has had discussion with Ms. Williams, and even Dr. McDermott, and Dr. Shepherd has also expressed, you know, ideas about how...about a reading plan for next year. And...
Reading's a little...
This was one area that we felt like we needed to pay more for a teacher who has deep expertise and reading skills to help our staff.
At the elementary level, you can have an emphasis in reading, and you're a reading specialist, but there's also the master's degree reading specialist. We're going to have...our reading problem will be attacked to such a degree, and it will be a multi-year program, that there is a...we're having problems actually with the lingo, because like there's a Region 12 Master Reading Teacher Program that we're going to have teachers go to that's...I think it's eight weeks or...then there's also a skilled program in math that we're going to have...we're going to get more training in reading for our teachers through professional development. But when you have the master's degree in reading, that is a high level of specialization, and that is just another way that we recognize. And you had asked about the math and science, and some of it is the signs of the time. At one time, we had lots of math and science teachers, so we didn't pay stipends. Now, we pay stipends. If there becomes a glut of math people, we probably won't be paying the stipends.
No, I understand the critical need in math and science. I have no problem with that. I'm just...you know, it seems to me for... I'm just, you know, it seems to me for, taking your example, if someone goes through the Region 12 Master Reading Program, or for example, there was a elementary reading teacher in the district who was exceptional, who was getting results every year, her students were passing, whether she was at Viking Hills or North Waco, and continually getting 100%. I think she was at Bell Hill at one time. I don't know if she had a master's degree or not. It didn't matter, she got results and got 100%. I would pay her a stipend for, for that skill set of being able to elevate kids on their ability to read. I would have a problem if she doesn't have a master's degree, she's not getting the stipend and a brand-new teacher who has a master's degree is going to get a two or $4,000 stipend.
Mr. Atkins?
Two thousand.
I, I mean, I'm, if Dr. Kane is okay with this, I am okay with, as y'all all know, my staff is about to go out and recruit and that's why I bring stipends early. If we want to talk about the reading teacher stipends, maybe next month, that's fine, maybe administration can kind of discuss the reading plan.
But no, I know, but look, I think we need to move forward. I'm not, and I'm okay with it. I do, I mean, I want y'all to go out and be able to find the best reading teachers and math teachers and science teachers you can. Again, my concern, I guess, would be Elaine, you're at a job fair, you find an amazing teacher and she says, oh, you give a reading stipend, or he says, you give a stipend for reading teachers, this is my results, and then you have to tell it, well, you don't qualify because you don't have a master's degree even though you've, you've got all this great, and that, to the extent we don't require it in the others, I was just curious as to why. We're ready to move forward. It may not, nobody else may have that concern. It just seemed strange that we were putting it on that one and I do think we're setting ourselves up for getting calls from other employees who also have master's degrees across the district saying, why are we paying a stipend for these masters?
But we, we still get calls from other, other than math or science now. Why does math get a stipen, science gets a stipen, special ed doesn't? And of course, we say it's because it's a, a high need. When it comes to reading, the example that you gave, Mr. President, that teacher, whether she had a master's degree or not, hopefully the board's going to fund our incentive pay plan. The idea of that was to take care of the teacher that you're talking about that just goes above and beyond and helps che, students achieve the, and whether or not she has a master's degree. If she gets those monies and she has a, a master's degree, that would be additional money for her. One difference is we will be using our elementary and reading teachers to help work with other teachers. There will be an expectation that in the grade levels, and we need as much coverage as possible because we have a reading situation that we're going to go after Hammer and Tong.
I want the reading teachers out there doing the extra work you're talking about. I'm just, again, let me ask you this, are you concerned, are you concerned, are you concerned that other teachers with master's degrees are going to, across the district are going to come and say, we would also like a stipend for our master's degree?
I'm not concerned, I feel like they will. I mean, no, that, yes, I feel like that those were, those will be questions that we will be asked to answer, just like we have a lot of teachers who say, I don't understand, I'm a really good social studies teacher, my kids achieve on the STAR test and there's not a stipend for me.
Well, okay, I, maybe you can answer. To the extent you're looking for that wonderful reading teacher to work with the other teachers, what was your thought in requiring an additional master's degree for that position?
An additional master's degree?
Requiring a master's degree instead of it just being this very qualified energetic teacher.
I agree that there are teachers, there could even be, that teacher that you're talking about may not even have a specialization particularly in reading, but she just is that person with reading. I think that happens. I think what we're looking at, that this increases the likelihood that when you have that kind of interest and, and there's been an investment, that there is a greater likelihood that we're going to get those kind of reading skills that we need that the teacher not only can teach the students, but other teachers. We want to really get reading in the content areas because that's an area that we've not really addressed that well.
Do you think the master's degree will help create a greater likelihood that that'll...
I'm hoping. And if it doesn't work, I mean, and this will be something that they'll be asked to do, this is why you're getting paid more, this is what we expect to see, and then we'll see if we see that. And also, it's available to anyone who has a master's degree in reading.
It has to be, okay. Other questions, thoughts? Carrie, you want to pull that mic towards you? That's all right.
I want to agree with Pat in this and I, I just, I, I feel, I want to reward people that are good at their jobs for what they do in the classroom during the day and I really, I don't care that much about whether or not they've got a master's degree. And I understand, you can make a solid argument that I guess requiring the master, master's degree is going to result in recruits that are what incrementally more qualified to perform that task, but I don't, I just don't feel like it necessarily makes it so. I'd rather just pay 2,000 people, $2,000 stipend to people that are really good at teaching kids to read.
But we're also...
If that's what we need.
We're also trying to attract them to come to the district. We need more...
Put the money there. Like I said, I just...
Well, but they won't know if we hire someone that, you know, they, they convince us they're good at reading.
I mean, look, we, I mean, we need help in math, we need help in science, we need help in just about everything.
Bilingual ESL in reading are our key needs.
Maybe not as much, but I mean, it, we're not making the assumption there that the master's degree helps you...
Be a better math scientist.
Be a better math scientist.
But at the secondary level, there's...
Because we need help across the board.
When you're at the secondary level, you have a specialty in math or science or whatever your special, a major and a minor. When you're in elementary, you get an elementary education.
You're paying 4,000 for the secondary reading specialist with a master's degree.
Who are, who's teaching at the middle or high school.
Right, and your math and science teachers are also teaching at the middle or high school and you're not requiring a master's degree of them.
Right, because reading and science, math and science teachers are few and far between and if we put that, you have to have a master's degree in addition to that, we...
I feel like in the end, we've got to somehow provide compelling, to folks that already have master's degree that aren't getting paid any extra in their stipend, we've seen, it seems to me that we need to be able to present compelling evidence that in this particular discipline, having that master's degree makes you a lot better.
Than not having a master's degree.
Than folks that don't have their master's degree. And I, maybe it's so, I, but I'm not sure I've seen that study.
Mr. President? Yeah, let her answer that question first.
There are, what, okay, what's the short version of that question? To make certain I answer it. Oh, why, why do I think a master's degree...
Well, what is the compelling reason where you can tell...
Show me some evidence that, yeah, that, okay, it's going to get us a better reading teacher, but it doesn't get us a better math teacher. I think that's sort of what I'm after.
Okay, I don't think I'm doing a good job explaining, clearly, I'm not doing a good job explaining this.
I'm doing a really poor job of understanding.
We are desperate for math and science people. I mean, literally, it, it's, we are, we, we have a price war with other districts to get, to get out of college, we pay them this large stipend, okay?
Okay.
If we required a master's degree...
Not so much with reading teachers in general?
Right.
Just reading teachers with master's?
Because one, one, when you kind of get to the, the, the reading, now, I'm not certain what the, at one time, reading specialists were K-12. Still?
Yes.
Okay. One, you're getting the K-12 reading certificate, okay, which goes along with the master's degree. We're asking them to work either at the elementary or the high school level with two, with kids who are struggling to read and they've been struggling to read. We need them to work with each teacher to teach, the other teachers to teach them how to help the kids. Example, in math, sometimes when they miss a story problem, it's not the math they miss, they can't read the problem.
But I think, I understand that and you want that extra work and you're paying this teacher for that extra time and for working with those other teachers and doing the instruction and reading.
Because she knows reading.
And she knows reading.
And she knows how to teach person, a person how to teach reading and a kid how to read.
I get all that. I, I, but I don't understand is why you're putting a master's degree requirement on that person instead of getting that person who can demonstrate, who has that demonstrated skill set.
Okay, so you're saying we would have a skill set that we would say, may or may not, if you can teach reading, I, probably because we don't have that test, I mean, I, it could be...
There's not, I don't know, any other stipend or any other critical area in the district, any other stipend we've ever paid that's had this condition attached to it. Even though we've required additional work, we've paid stipends for folks who've taught other people, I'd never know. Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
As I understand it, the incentive is to attract a professional that has not only the ability to teach young people, but to train teachers and how to teach young people. And so, whereas it is exceptionally difficult to procure teaching professionals in math and science, especially if we make a stipulation of master's or PhD, when it comes to meeting the need of procuring these professionals for teaching reading, it is in our best interest, as I understand the recommendation, to aggressively pursue people that can not only teach the children, but to train the teachers. I don't necessarily see this stipend as a, okay, well, if you have a master's, we're going to give you this. This is saying we're looking for a specific type of professional and that professional will be inundated with the methodology necessary to teach professionals, not just teach students. Now, if we say we want to aggressively pursue math and science, we need someone to teach differential equations and we're going to put out a stipend and make sure we can get accomplished professionals to do that, then we'll certainly approve that. But as it is right now, this is not saying that we're not willing to pay teachers that have the ability to teach reading, we're saying this is something we're looking to implement to aggressively pursue getting professionals that can operate in this different capacity. Is that about right? All right.
And so, and at this time, you've not identified how many reading teachers that is?
We have not identified how many staff members.
Some will be resignations, you know, if we, but we have got to emphasize reading. We have a huge reading problem.
Clearly, we all know that we need to do something different when it comes to reading in this district. Administration has had that discussion. Again, I, I will say, and if Dr. Kane supports this, I want to be able to go out and recruit. You know, I'm coming with the list that you've seen before, with the exception of these two new stipends, the reading teacher stipends. And if we want to defer the discussion of reading teacher stipends, whether it's for master degree in reading or additional training from Region 12 with a certification, I mean, if Dr. Kane is okay with that, I'm fine with it. I, I just want to be able to go to the job fairs and be competitive with other districts. And I'm not just talking about the surrounding districts, I'm talking about statewide.
What we could do is bring the reading plan, maybe that's, would, would help. Here is the reading plan, K-12, and that's, this is how that fits in that plan. And we could do that, we could pull that for now, bring the reading plan and show how that fits.
Let me ask you, because I don't, I don't want to put you in a bind though. I don't want to put you behind on your recruiting efforts.
I'm fine, I'm fine with turning back with a reading...
In terms, in terms of if you don't have the reading plan adopted yet, when you begin going to job fairs, are you hiring reading teachers yet?
Yes, we're, we're hiring, yes, yes.
So, you'll be hiring reading teachers immediately?
If I see a good one that, if I see a good one who has proven success, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm going to try to hire that candidate. Now, whether the stipend is a deal breaker for that candidate coming to Waco ISD, I'm sure that it would help, but, you know, we're also looking at the teacher pay scale as well, as we always do.
They could be teaching third grade at Dean Highland and they've got a master's degree in reading. You know, they, they may not be the reading teacher, we're looking for teachers who can really teach reading.
Why don't we just rename this position like, for example, a master elementary reading teacher with preferably a master degree? Not necessarily a master degree, but prefer...
Master degree preferred.
Yes.
That way, they could still hire the best person.
Yeah.
Elaine, that's what I would hate to see you do is passing up a perfectly qualified teacher and the fact they don't have masters and you can't get them because you can't pay them a stipend because we specified here that they have to have a master's degree. We just want you to go hire a good reading...
Where'd you get the best person?
I'm all for spending money on solving the problem, I don't have an issue with that. I, I...
Good idea. Good idea.
I mean, is that, is that more...
As far as budget, again, I, I really don't know the numbers yet as far as it was...
Or is there something about reading teachers that a master's degree is that much stronger an indicator of...
Other than just additional coursework and classes in that content area.
Yeah, it, and it's, you can, you can get a bachelor's degree and have an emphasis in reading, like you can have an emphasis in math. When you have the master's degree, you're considered a reading specialist and you have had 36 hours, three hours in adolescence literature, three hours in learning how to read, three hours in identifying reading problem, three hours, six hours in an internship. So, it is 36 hours, it's, everything's reading. And that's the kind of teacher that we're looking for, someone who, one has an interest in, two, has that knowledge base.
Ms. Sykes?
In that regard, would the job description for these positions go to the level of differentiating the requirements for this specific job as needing or requiring a master's degree to successfully complete the assigned task?
Yes. And let me, and I want to make sure you understand, this is a stipend we're recommending, not a position. So, you have job descriptions for positions.
Okay.
However, what we have done in the past for stipends, for example, for a lead teacher, lead PE teacher, lead art teacher, we have had a, kind of like a job description, expectations in order for you to receive that stipend. Here's what you have to do.
It would seem to be that this, to require the master's level, would require a, a very, a higher level of educational attainment in order to produce the, perform the functions of the job, you know, with these other additional, you know, requirements that you attach to it.
And this person could be, and I'm just thinking of three different jobs right now. One, this could be a third grade teacher who gets a $2,000, well, an elementary, $2,000 stipend and she, or he, is teaching third grade, but they have this extra expertise in reading. This person could also be, we're going to start requiring our specialists at the elementary level, that at least one specialist needs to be a reading specialist who would have a master's degree. So, this would be, the person would be getting the reading specialist and, on a campus. It could also be what, like Ms. Ellis has, the content area specialist, the reading, I mean, we're having reading, reading is, we're reading.
Okay. Elaine, you made an interesting point. This is not a new position, it's a stipend. So, if I read this and I'm a reading teacher, I mean, we have reading teachers we employ now. So, every reading teacher we employ now who has a master's will get the stipend?
Masters in reading.
Yeah, masters in reading.
But I mean, every, so every reading teacher we have right now on staff...
If they are willing to accept the expectations in order to receive that stipend, which would be to help other teachers develop the skills needed to help our students read.
To help with lesson planning on writing, on reading lessons.
I think, I do think Larry makes a good point, whether we put masters preferred or masters required. I think if you just list it as reading teacher, then arguably, every reading teacher is going to say they're entitled to get that. I think there needs to be some, if, if this is not your reading teacher, you're not paying a stipend for a reading teacher, you're paying a stipend for a reading teacher who's willing to assist with professional development and, and these other components. And I think you need to differentiate that as a master reading teacher or something so that they understand that not everybody under a contract with a reading teacher or every reading teacher who has a master's degree automatically gets that stipend. And so, you may be creating a new position.
Well, and that's why I'd like to pull this so we, before we start changing it too much without thinking through all the scenarios and it might put us in a situation that we're actually rewarding some teacher, I mean, that we're not getting that extra skill, because I agree, there, there are the reading teachers you're talking about that may not be identified who are the wow, reading teachers, but there's also some people who teach reading that need the help from...
Right. And they may have a master's degree, but they still need the help. And that's not the one you want to pay the stipend to.
So, why don't we...
And I kind of like that idea, like lead reading teacher, but I also like Dr. Kane's suggestion of maybe coming back later and have the district present the reading plan for the district. Which is how we're going to address that. And then we can talk about whether it's a position or a stipend or, or what do we need to do.
If we do that, you would ask us to move forward on the other stipends you have here.
So, that, Mr. President, if with your permission, I would like to change my recommendation that... that I'm recommending that the board approve an increase in all the content areas listed above, except for the reading, the two reading teacher stipends, which I would like to bring back at a future date.
And connect, with the reading plan?
Yes, sir, with the reading plan.
We'll do that at the same time, and, okay. So we're talking about then, your recommendation would be to adopt the proposed stipends for the high school math, high school science, middle school math, middle school science, bilingual and ESL positions that are set out on the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any other questions, comments, discussions?
You want to change seats?
Oh, whoops, Mr. Manning. Too many Ms.
You and a crossfire.
There are too many Ms. Mr. Dupuy, if you'll pull that mic towards you again.
Sorry. Okay, we're voting on everything but the reading teachers, is that correct, for the rest of the? And I guess my only question at this point, Elaine, and I'm, I know it's a perennial struggle for us in just attracting the talent we need to the district. And I certainly want to spend money where it's effective to spend money. Does this solve a problem for you? Does this put, does this arm you with what you need? Is this really the obstacle to achieving your goals? The, well, okay, there's, maybe that's not realistic. Does this get you over some sort of hump? I, I'm, I guess we're fixing, we're about to find out, but in.
It definitely helps when I go out and recruit and have to stand by several districts who are, either have a higher teacher pay scale or higher stipends, so it definitely helps.
Because I, we're getting on up there, our stipends are considerably higher than just about everybody else's now, it would appear, from what I can tell on the charts.
There's this current, they're gonna, they're, they will be hitting their stipends for math and science as well. We're just trying to get out ahead of everybody else, because there is an absolute fight for science and math teachers at, at the secondary level. Dr. Shepherd?
Ayes.
Oh, is that Mr. Love?
Amen.
Okay, I got two amens.
Getting an amen from everybody?
I am, okay. I, and, just, I'm, I'm a firm believer that teachers are underpaid, I'm not, I'm just trying to get at what the root of the problem is and make sure that we're applying a Band-Aid where we're hurting.
Mr. Dupuy?
Yes.
Baylor, you know, we work with Dean Engelhardt in the College of Education. At a recent superintendent's meeting on, with the, all the superintendents, with the co-joining borders to Waco ISD, there's ten of us, and Dr. Engelhardt. The talk was such that he said, let me go back and see what I can do, because every one of us was desperate and fighting one another for math and science teachers. All ten of us had a severe shortage problem. Dr. Dean Engelhardt went back to Baylor, worked with the math department and science department, not in the education, to see if there was any way they could work with some kind of program that we would have a person who knew science, writing lesson plans. I mean, that is how bad it is in this entire area for, for math and science teachers. It is a huge problem, and it's going to be a problem for two or three years, because even Baylor can't think of a solution for it. I think they have five graduates with math degrees and two of science, or something like that. It is a severe shortage, because the kids who go, and they get a math degree, and they can work in industry, or they can get, because they almost have as many hours, or they can go into education, and then that's when the, the salary comes in. And that's what we're trying to offset.
Maybe, and, I understand that, and I appreciate that. I guess the motivation for my comments, and I'm just thinking, you know, we're currently three times, what, midway's stipend for science teachers?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure they're having problems, I'm not sure they're having as much.
I believe they're, I think we're all.
Everybody's struggling, they're just not struggling, or they're just not throwing as much money at the problem as we are.
How many science teachers are we short right now in our classrooms?
Well, I can tell you that we, as far as turnover, secondary, we lost probably about twenty-one science teachers last year.
That's middle and high schools?
Seventeen math secondary.
And they're leaving?
We need, we need to be able to retain our, our teachers. I think this will help.
Are they leaving for more money?
I'm talking about the teachers, not just recruiting, but the teachers that are here now.
To not go.
To not go.
We, we, we almost lost one at semester, because of a job in another district.
I mean, I think, I think it would help.
What percent are leaving for more money, do you think?
Oh, percent.
Because that's what we're throwing at the problem. I'd like to think it's going to have some effect.
I wish I could give you the percent, I can tell you the numbers, I just remember the numbers.
Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Love, do you mind if we, let, let's let the principals?
That's okay. No, I'm fine with that.
Here's, and here's, I, I want to make sure we're not doing anything else that's inadvertently driving our teachers off. And I have, I want to pay them more, I want them to make more money, and I've, I really do value, I just want us to be intelligent about how we're going about spending the limited resources that we've got. And I, it's also very important to me that if we spend the money, it does solve a problem for us. That's, that's really what I'm after. I don't want this to be just a, well, we tried. I want to know this is going on.
It will help. Are there some other things that we can consider that we've discussed? Yes?
To keep from, okay. That would aid in retaining folks, and, yeah, okay.
Listen, yeah, listen, okay, talk to us, talk, tell them.
In three years, and I go by student teachers, in each career field. I have a whole slew of ELA teachers that are student teachers at Baylor, a whole slew of social studies student teachers. I have never had a science student teacher that is student teaching, you know, at university that would be a potential hire for science. Haven't had one. In math, I've had a handful.
So are we somehow looking for this news to reach back into the institution of higher education, Baylor and, no?
No, that's not what I'm saying. For the limited number that is there, I need all the guns I can have, because there are none. I'm, I'm just using that as an example. Whole slew of English, whole slew of social studies, handful of math, zero science. So we're out there fighting for the colleges and universities that did produce science student teachers, and these science teachers, to get our hands on them. Now, if this doesn't, come on, I mean.
What do you do when you don't have a science teacher? It's September first, and you have two science vacancies, what do you, who do you hire?
You, you hire alternative certified folks, someone that may have had a skeleton or two in their closet from other places.
That you wouldn't have hired otherwise.
I'm familiar, and I'm not pretending this is not a problem, I, I'm, I'm familiar with it, and I understand, I, I'm.
And Mr. Love was a new principal this year, Mr. Love, what was your experience there? And include Carver.
I had to hire too many teachers this year, way too many. I did get an opportunity to go to some of the job fairs for Ms. Potello, and when you go into those, those gyms or wherever you're, where you're located, the school district who has a lot of, who have real good incentive pay or stipends, they put that right up on the tables for, for all those potential teachers to see. And it doesn't look good when you're there and you see all those, those nice stipends, and ours don't compete. And I went to at least three job fairs last year, and we were definitely behind in a lot of areas. And we were competitive in some, too, but we were definitely behind. And it makes a difference, because I'm telling you, they put it right on top of the table, and everybody walks by and take a look at it.
Hey, here's a flip side, too. I have not lost a math or science teacher to another district. So the ones I've got are, that are, they're staying. Now, whether there's, whatever the reason they're staying, I've not had them replaced.
That's what we need.
You don't lock the door, nothing about.
We need more, whatever that is.
You need more.
He's going to tell me what he's doing, too, so I can do the same.
But Elaine, it's understood what you said, I mean, even though Dr. Shepherd's got them locked in.
Yeah, middle school.
You've had, you've had twenty-one science teachers leave last year across the secondary, and then seventeen math teachers.
Did they all go to troop?
I will tell you, I attended two college graduations myself this year, proud mama, and I, I did have to hone in on those biology and math graduates, and I wish I would have had eight, some alternative certification cards to give out to them. But, I mean, yeah, I mean, a lot of your math and science teachers are coming from all sort programs.
They don't?
They're just not, yeah, they're, like Dr. Shepherd said, you know, Baylor didn't have any, you know, this past year, and.
Let me say this, I want you to be able to have everything you need and all the ammunition you need throughout the job fairs. I'm okay with these stipends, but I think Carrie makes a, a good point. If there are other issues that we know are causing the turnover, separate and apart from whether they're getting an extra six thousand or an extra eight thousand, and I know Cabinet's beginning to have discussions along these lines, but when we look at the turnover, because truth is, even though those are very high numbers, we lost, we're turning over a lot of teachers in a lot of different areas. And so there's some other systemic issues that the administration needs to think about and discuss, so that we can do a better job of retaining teachers once we get them in. And it's issues more than just throwing two more thousand dollars on a stipend.
And I couldn't agree with you more. Cabinet has had that discussion, and we will continue to have that discussion on some other considerations to move forward on.
Mr. Pettis?
This goes to you, Ms. Davis here. If we would up it another thousand, what would that, what would be the cost on that? Rough estimate?
Depends, I guess, on what area you are referring to. Are you talking about math, or?
I'm talking about all these stipends up and down.
Combined, another thousand?
On top of another hundred thousand.
Yeah, probably over a half a million.
Another hundred thousand on top of this, though, right? About?
Yes, I mean, because we were like, at about, combined, four hundred and fifty-three thousand.
On the increase?
We would look better to recruit, you know, job fairs.
Mr. President?
Ms. Manning.
If I remember correctly, I know, I know that we, we looking at the budget for salaries and for stipends and stuff, but if I remember correctly, we had a discussion about the fact that when we get these new teachers, new to the district or new into teaching, that we needed more mentorship with these teachers, that, that has been one of the major problems also, why, why we're having such a high turnover rate. I, I think, I think we, we need to be also concerned, I, I guess it's a two-edged sword, you need, you need both of them.
You're correct.
You need, you need the, the money to get them here, but you need also the support to keep them here.
That is correct.
And we're going to see the fruits of that labor this year, because this, this was the year that it was fully implemented, a teacher mentor program, our professional development, and I, I think we're already showing that that has helped us a great deal.
This is the second year of the SUCCEED program that was developed by Patrick Upmore. Feedback has been good, and I know that he has made some changes this year to make it better. So I look forward to seeing his survey results on that plan, but I have been hearing good things about the SUCCEED program.
Well, like I said, that's just a point, I think, I think, you know, it's a two-edged, we need, we need to have the stipends, we need to increase the money, but I think we need to increase our involvement with the mentorship to make sure that these teachers stay.
When are you going on the recruiting trail?
We start at the end of February.
So, Mr. President?
And I'll be happy to send you the, oh, actually, it's online, the recruiting schedule.
Ms. Murphy?
So, Mr. Manning, just so I'm clear, as, as I understand this proposal, this stipend or the increase was to leverage in the, I guess, the pursuit of acquiring accomplished, well-credentialed professionals that can not only operate in the capacity of teaching or lecturing to the young people, but could also cultivate the atmosphere conducive towards our endeavor. Is that correct? So that means that this type of measure could, in essence, cut down on our high turnover rate, because we're bringing in someone to cultivate what we want, our way of doing things.
But these aren't, these stipends aren't requiring the professor, this is just a critical need.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but when we look, look at the, the idea of where we see this reading specialization, it's like, we want a person that doesn't only have a master's degree, but a master's in reading. I believe that could cut down on some, you know, the, the turnover, especially if we did in other areas. I mean, we start finding people that are highly capable in not only teaching in these areas, but could also aid other teachers to help them to not leave or to overcome what they're dealing with on campuses every day, so.
Yeah, we, we try to build that collegiality between and among departments, grade levels, subjects, and.
Pat, is there a motion? I'm trying to remember where we are, is there a motion?
There was, no, is there a motion on this?
Motion, yes.
Yeah, Larry and North.
Seven to zero.
Except for the two reading.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just exempted the two reading stipends. Hold on, wait, say that again. You've already got a vote on there?
Yes, sir.
No, the vote was on item C, I think.
Well, I don't think we've, yeah, we, we did.
Mr. Pettis moved, Mr. Manning seconded.
How did I vote?
And everybody, everybody agreed.
I think that's when the line of questioning started, maybe I'm wrong. I don't think, yeah, we can review the tape. Did we vote?
We have an instant replay.
We can vote again.
We had a motion.
No, we didn't.
Yeah. We do have a motion.
But we haven't voted.
I don't think, I didn't think we'd vote it, she said we vote passed it unanimously.
I think the motion is to recommend the, accept the recommendation, except for the two reading stipends.
Can we have?
That we had a vote on, then we went, and we kept, and we kept talking. I don't think we voted.
Here's all I ask, I'm all for paying the teachers more, I want you focused on some of the other things, the non-pccunyary issues that we may be facing in our human resources to help retain our folks. All right, I'm done.
And I think everybody, thankfully, I think everybody understands, we all appreciate, and I, Ms. Manning said it very well, as, as well, that there are other issues that we need to look at, so it's just a thing.
But we definitely need to bring it back up next year to pay even more, we got to.
Okay.
Well, and I think you'll see on the next agenda item that, we're, we need to have a balance, I, I need to be competitive on the teacher pay scale, too, so we'll, I appreciate your.
Coming back next month. No, the reading piece only, the others are what we're about to vote on. Any other questions, comments on the stip, critical need stipends for math, science, bilingual, or ESL? All right, all those favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, and Ms. Potello, item J, which is the salary for step zero.
I'm not sure who pulled that one, but I want to let you know that there was an error on the agenda. I put that in your folder on Round Rock ISD, their starting teacher pay for zero year is forty-three thousand.
Yeah, forty-seven thousand is there in Rowan.
Yes.
I have a question.
Ms. Manning.
Okay, in the salary, starting the proposed salary schedule, is that saying that for your first four years, after you start, that you don't get any increase for four years, five years?
We're only asking the board to vote on zero year at this time, and a recommendation will be made on the full teacher pay scale, probably in August, somewhere around that time.
Yeah, we need to.
Well, but it says here for first year, zero year, forty-five, all the way down to the fourth year.
Correct, go ahead, sorry, sure.
So that there's no increase?
Well, basically, we show that to you anytime we increase the starting salary, because you don't want years, you know, if you're going to have years zero at forty-five thousand, you don't want years one, two, three, and four, less than that. So, we're basically showing you the financial impact, which I think is about three hundred and.
It's two hundred thousand.
It's how much?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, to have those, if we were not able to do any more salary increase, and this is the first year of a biennium, so we'll have legislation this year, and we were just going to have those first four or five levels at the forty-five thousand, that's what it's going to cost us to make this decision. That's why we do this.
Okay.
But we will come back in July, whenever later in the year, as soon as we know what our money is, with the real proposal for the rest of the schedule.
Yes, we're, we are hoping that we will be able to make adjustments throughout the pay scale.
I'm a little confused.
All right, so just so it's clear, you have attached a salary schedule on page thirty-nine of the agenda that has a column that says that you have a proposed 2015-16 salary schedule. And that schedule shows first year, second year, third year, fourth year, and fifth year teachers all making the same amount of money.
Correct.
Correct. Correct.
And what you're, I guess the purpose of that is to show, with no additional revenues, this would be one way to accommodate raising step zero $2,000.
Well, you have to understand what the financial impact, I think, of raising a teacher's salary $2,000 right now.
Right.
And assuming you don't want year one, two, three to be lower than the starting salary, your financial impact that you would be adopting tonight would be $368,000 for the district.
Right, but realistically, there's more of a ripple effect than that, I mean, if we, because we're going to have an interval between step zero and step one in all likelihood, and between step one and step two.
At minimum, this is what you're obligating the district for by adopting a $45,000 starting salary tonight.
To the extent there are about 1,000 teachers on that pay scale, is it safe to assume that if we do what we've done in the past and kept most of those intervals the same, then this increase would be closer to at least $2 million impact?
If you, basically, I think what I had looked at, if you went a $500 increment between steps, starting with 45,000, you're talking about 2.3 million.
And if we go that way, I mean, sitting here today, or, I mean, you're, you're the one who's looking at the finances and projections and monitoring kind of what the just talk is in Austin as that process gets going, are you comfortable with the, I mean, because I look at 45,000 and I say, "Okay, we're paying more to a first-year teacher next year than we're paying a fifth-year teacher this year, we're paying almost as much as we're paying a sixth-year teacher this year," I mean, that's a, that's a considerable jump, and it's going to have that ripple effect of potentially 2.3 million. Are you comfortable right now saying 45 is something we ought to be able to absorb as we look at the budget this summer?
Well, and, you know, as we've done in prior years, I mean, there's some stuff that we have to maybe do a $400 increment, maybe a little bit smaller, and I think that was about a million six, a million seven. So, I mean, there's some things that we could do in the schedule if, if we don't get the revenues that currently is looking like we might get, I mean, they're talking right now, and of course, that depends on where you are property value-wise, what you might be picking up, but they're talking about between 2.5 and 3% increase in our state revenues. They're going to have a lot of money available, I think, because of the property value increases this past year, they're talking about 4.5 billion from that, so I am a little more comfortable this year at the start of a biennium or start of a legislative session than I have been the last two sessions, because there certainly looks like there's more money available. We have also underspent our budget the last two years considerably, not exactly sure why that's happening, we've been kind of looking at that to see why that's happening, but, you know, the only other real concern I have, and it's sort of a paper concern, and we could, we'll kind of talk about that maybe next month with the financials and the first budget, kind of budget update that we'll do, is the TRS situation and the impact that's going to have on our governmental fund balance or net position, but, yeah, I, I think that we could make this work, even if we have to maybe make smaller intervals between steps.
When you say 2.3 million, does that include the non-teaching positions that are tied into?
That's only for the scale.
And how much additional, I mean, is that about another 50% again typically?
Um...
I can't remember what that...
(inaudible).
It doesn't matter, but there are other folks that tie into it, 2.3 plus the other positions that are tied into the scale, but even with that, there's something, from what you're hearing, you think we can absorb 45,000?
From what we're hearing right now, I think this will not be a problem.
Thank you, Cheryl. Other questions or comments? Ms. Manning?
Yes, sir. I know we always consider the teachers, but what about the paraprofessionals and the other ones?
And since that, 2.3 does not consider any other employee groups at this point, just in, is the teacher group.
If possible, if possible, I would be looking at, what percent is this, from 30, from 43 to 45 is about?
Overall, it was about, I think it actually...
Was it, was it a 1.7%?
Well, that's for this, this particular schedule, 1.7.
Oh, I'm sorry, 4.7?
If you run it all the way up the schedule, I think it was somewhere around 4.7.
4.7?
Getting close to 5%, which is higher than we've ever been.
But we would be looking at something probably not equal to, but, but yes, we would be...
But we would include, include the other people?
Yes, in the final overall pay compensation.
Again, we're not adopting, and just clever, we're not adopting that salary schedule, they're just kind of showing this is the minimum impact, and I appreciate that clarification. All right, other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Manning. And you're right, we do need to make sure we take care of the paraprofessionals and all the staff.
I've got 3, I've got 3.61.
And we have some equity adjustments we want to do, you raised the auxiliary starting schedule, starting salary last year, and we kind of have some equity adjustments that that created to, we need to address.
Thanks, Cheryl. Other questions, comments? All right, go ahead, Carrie, if you'll pull the mic towards you, I'll let you talk.
Yeah, we're gonna put a spring on that thing.
I'll try to remember that next time. And just, we have to have, over time, increases in pay, but just for the moment, would our teachers, what would they prefer, a raise, or, let's just say for 2.3 million, an additional 50 hands, additional teachers on campuses around the district, helping lighten the overall load? Or is that even a possibility? You know, I, I don't know if that's realistic, I'm not sure you can make that trade, I don't know.
(inaudible).
Well, I mean, you, you reduce class sizes, maybe...
I'm going to tell you again, administration is talking about other considerations to help with recruiting and retention in this district. One thing y'all did that has helped, and I'm sure that you've heard the thank yous many times, is the behavior instructional support aids that we've given the campuses.
Right.
I mean, so, I know that's helped.
We could buy 100 of those.
And, and we need to continue to have a discussion of what are some, some other ways to make Waco ISD a place where teachers want to work.
There's one thing I remember, once we commit on these salary increases, we're...
It helps.
We're pretty committed, well, and I, I know, I'm sure it helps, I'm just, I'm sure what helps most, there's a lot of...
No, you're right, we're, we're, we're not going down, it's never going to go down, you're right.
You know, it's, we, we can't, can't change our minds six months from now.
Decrease the salary.
But I, I'll leave that to you professionals, right, just a thought to consider, is this the best way to expend those resources? All right.
All right, other thoughts, questions, comments? All right, then I will entertain a motion to increase the starting salary at step zero to $45,000 a year effective next school year.
Sir?
Ms. Pettis, thank you, Ms. Teckell, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you, Ms. Potello, now go out and find us some good teachers, some more good teachers. Item nine, discussion possible action.